Hello friends, today we are going to have another study session from the book Teachings of Great Ones written by Thokam Saradhanian. And we are going to study about the verses given in Isha Upnishad as explained by Thokam. So to begin with, I would like to share once again the meaning of Upnishad. It is the teachings of wisdom which liberates the human being from the bondage of matter and helps him to attain the self. So when we study and practice the teachings of Upnishad, it gives the way to free oneself from the bondages of matter and also it helps in a person to attain the real self. So we are going to study eighteen verses as explained in Isha Upnishad and the details are shared by Thokam Saradhanian through my voice that is Ritu Shvetakochan. The first verse. This whole existence is indwelt by the Lord. Whatsoever exists belongs to Him. Renounce and enjoy it. Do not desire the wealth of anyone else. This whole existence is indwelt by the Lord. It does not say, "My Lord, your Lord, my Bible, your book, our rituals, your dogmas." Humanity is devastated by religious separatism. There is no religion in this. This whole existence is indwelt by the Lord. It means the Lord is everywhere, in everything, every moment if you feel that presence. If your skin becomes thin a little and senses it. This is the final blow for all wars, hatreds, anger, jealousy, gossip and so on. Because if you love the Lord, the Lord is in everybody, not in you only. The tomatoes you are eating, the Lord is in them. That is why you will respect everything that you are eating and you are drinking. The Lord is in the water, the Lord is in the air. You are living a different dimension now. Instead of feeling a dimension of hatred, anger, jealousy, self-intrust, manipulation and exploitation, that is the past. Leave them to those people who are still blind and ignorant. You passed that, you are in another dimension. You are seeing the Lord in everything. Even the seat you are sitting on, the chair you are sitting on, the carpet you are walking on, how grateful, how subtle, how beautiful you will be that you feel the presence of the Lord in everything. I remember my teacher one day was very tired from sitting on the horse for four to five years, hours. We came to the temple and he said, "I am really tired." Then he took off his shoes and threw them. Then he made a gesture which I was so happy to see on his face. He went and brought the shoes and loving. The shoe said, "I should not throw you." In that little moment, I felt how deep is this man? Everything that is given to you is a gift from wholeness and the Lord dwells in it. Your wife, your sister, your boyfriend, your husband, your children and so on. They are the manifestation of the Lord. You are the reflection of one Lord. You are not different individuals. It is so heavy, so beautiful that it will take you from silly thinking, silly feelings to the height of philosophy and intuition. So whatever exists belongs to Him, that is God. Do not desire the wealth of anyone else. The desire for things belonging to others makes things belong to them. In the Bhagavad Gita we read, when a man dwells on objects, he dwells attachment to the objects. From attachment arises desire and desire breeds anger. From anger arises confusion, failure of memory. From the failure of memory comes loss of discrimination and here the man fails on the path of his spiritual striving. It is important to know that the memory referred to here is the recollection of the divine law of unity or the reality of the supreme self, the wholeness. So that is what we need to remember. Verse two. If a man's renunciation is continuous during all of his life, even if he desires to live a hundred years, he will not be trapped in karma. Renunciation brings freedom from karma. This is his sacred duty. The world is in darkness. If you are detached, karma does not work for you. If you are detached, you are not doing anything. It is done for you. It is automatic, but you have no active participation in what you have. What you lose, what you are gaining, it is all detachment, self-denial. It is very interesting that karma does not work for the people who are renounced or who are detached. If you are attached, you are producing karma because your spirit is sin. This is mine, not the Lord's. Ten million dollars comes to your hands. Let us go to Las Vegas, let us go to Hawaii, this place, that place. You spend it, you are creating karma. You take it and give it to the Lord, who is the Lord's service. Build hospitals, publish books, it is not my money, it is the Lord's. I am a steward, a better to be a better steward and know where I am going to spend or not spend my money. The upnishads are straight knowledge, clear knowledge and renunciation brings freedom from karma. This is his sacred duty. The world is in darkness. Everybody, ninety-nine percent of the people are attached. You do everything to stick with your income, to stick to your job, to stick to your car. You think it is yours, it is not yours. But to understand this, you are going to shift your consciousness maybe one hundred eighty degrees. It is rarely not understood by people who are half-attached, half-detached. They mix up detachment, attachment. It is so interesting that people follow people who have money and want their money for themselves, their money for them, it is separatism. The Lord's money is the Lord's money, not for me, not for you, it is the Lord's money, Lord's wealth. Renunciation is the power which detaches us from involvement with the actions that bind us or with the material universe, the universe of birth and death. Renunciation is a withdrawal into the supreme self. In renunciation, we let go of all our identifications. The first word in this upnishad is Ishvaraya. Ishvasya. Which means God-infused, infused with the Lord. Renunciation helps us to fuse our real self with His self and free ourselves from the continuous cycles of birth and death. Sometimes in Vedic literature, they talk about a great danger. The great danger is the danger of falling down into the turning wheel of birth and death. Only through striving can one gradually fuse himself with the Lord. The sacred duty is the journey, the pilgrimage towards your true self. By renouncing on the path all objects of matter, emotion and mind, you can reach your true self. The world is in darkness and if we realize that darkness is translated as ignorance or inability to know one's own sacred duty, one day all our educational institutions will have one goal to help man find himself. This short upnishad is called the jewel of the whole upnishads because its main theme is the self, the jewel in the lotus, the spark within men. Verse three. The slayer of the self eventually falls into gloomy darkness where demons live. The slayer of the self, what is it? Every time you are separative, you have self-intrust, you live for yourself, you do everything for yourself, you are a demon. You are killing the self in you, which is omnipresent in everything, everywhere. You are slaying yourself. Do you understand how beautiful it is? Every time you are attacking an enemy to take his prosperity, you are slaying your national self, your international self by dividing and creating special interests for some group. This has many consequences if you think. All the politics in the world and in your brain suddenly shift and clear up if you start using these tools to create a new world and a new life for yourself. But it says they are in darkness, the world is in darkness. This means they are not awakened yet to the idea of wholeness. So I repeat this verse once again. The slayer of the self eventually falls into gloomy darkness where demons live. What are the demons? Demons are those who are blind to the fact that everything belongs to the Lord and the Lord is in everybody in every form. They became demons. Why demons? It is because they do every silly thing. They cause every pain and suffering to humanity, to their brothers and sisters to make their properties their own. Do you see living demons around you? One of course understands that to slay the self is an impossibility. The word is used metaphorically. We slay ourselves when we identify ourselves with the result instead of the cause when we identify ourselves with the objective manifestation instead of the supreme self. In the Rig Veda, we read that the shining souls or surya behold the face of the supreme lord. In other traditions, those who change their natures into light partake in a great ceremony which is carried on every sunrise to contact the supreme self of this planet. Verse four. The self never moves but is very swift for the mind. The senses cannot reach Him, He is beyond their comprehension. Remaining still and unmoved, He causes action in all those that exist. The Lord in you never moves, then why are we acting? Are we feeling, are we thinking positive, negative, pure and dirty? It is because of your gunas. It is because of the translation of the one Lord in you through the physical, emotional and mental nature which creates different expressions. One day I was in a bookstore and I found a translation of Isha Upnishad. The author this figure destroyed the upnishad. I said, "Wow, we must do something to correct it." Senses cannot comprehend it, hearing, seeing, touching, smelling cannot touch it. You need to be a little more advanced, a little more penetrative to the Lord, to that sphere of light to understand this. That is why for thirty-five years I have been insisting, do meditation, do meditation. People start doing meditation, yes, let's do it, then forget it. Do two, three months and then forget it. This has been going on for thirty-five years. Do steady meditation, then graduate from meditation into contemplation. Meditation is analysis, synthesis of something that you have. Contemplation does not have anything. Contemplation is suddenly to open the window in the highest building and to look to the skies. This is contemplation. You are not asking anything, you are not formulating anything, you are not visualizing anything. You are in electromagnetic tension to receive a revelation. Do not forget this definition. You are in electromagnetic tension to receive a revelation from the Lord. Here you suddenly see a vision, but it is not an astral vision. Some people come and say, "We saw a vision." Who are you to see a vision? Then they get angry because I did not praise them. Of course, your vision is nice, but who are you? How can you see visions? Vision is not mental even. It is not analysis or synthesis. It is not deduction, it is not mental activity, it is totally reversed. Like samadhi, where the mind enters into blackness. Your soul opens the window and waits. That is contemplation. It is not that contemplation that you receive. A dance, a painting, a book, a big plan to organize worldwide peace movements, love movements. It is a tremendous impact. Astral and mental visions live only one or two weeks. Contemplated visions are steady. Verse five. The self seems to move yet does not move at all. One thinks he is far yet he is the closest. He is within all that exists. Yet he is not limited in all that exists. Let's understand this. The self seems to move yet does not move at all. Who is the self, the Lord? You are moving and going, but the Lord in you is the unmoved one. Can imagine that? Imagine a string with one hundred beads and the beads are going right and left, up and down, but the thread is not moving. The thread in you is not moving. You are dying and taking birth, you are moving. But the Lord in you is not moving. The thread in you is not moving, it is the same line. You are appearing and disappearing, you are entering into darkness, light, into the unreal and the real, into death, to immortality, into chaos, to beauty, but the line is there. Phenomena are going on, but the Lord is there. If you are united with that Lord, you will watch yourself that going and coming, but it is not you. That is renunciation, renouncement. One thinks he is far yet he is the closest. He is within all that exists, where is far and near? The self is here, in my finger, the self is in my nose. The self is in my brain, the self is there, it is not far and close. There is no far, there is no close for the self. It is all it. How to find language to explain that? It is all omnipresent. When something is omnipresent, there are no feet and head, it is all there. People search for the self. Those who search will never find the self until they come to the conclusion that they themselves in their essence are the self, one with the all self. It is so beautiful to remember a mantra, a very powerful one. More radiant than the sun, purer than the snow, subtler than the ether is the self. The spirit within my heart, I am that self, that self am I. This realization comes to us more and more when we radiate beauty, goodness, righteousness, joy, freedom and truth and deal with other people as they were our own self. So we will shift to verse six now. Whoever sees the self in all beings and all beings in the self, he is the one who has perception and therefore does not hate anyone. Or This mantra is so beautiful. I am sorry if I have done some mistake in the pronunciation. You can learn this Sanskrit verse and recite it once a day. In doing this, a great change may start in your attitude toward human beings and to life in general. Whoever sees the self in all beings and all beings in the self, he is the one who has perception and therefore does not hate anyone. This state of consciousness is love consciousness. It is a continuation of something. He is talking about some ideas, but it is developing slowly, slowly. Whoever sees the Lord in everything is very good. Now I see the Lord in everything, but it is much more difficult to see that everybody is in the self because there the friction starts. Why is he hurting me? Why is he insulting me? Why did he do that? Now here the problem starts. But you are going to find a way to impress this philosophy into your brain in such a strong and clear way that you see the self in everybody and everybody in the self, whether they are in or they are not in. Now he is not in, but because the Lord is one, in Him. He is Him, but momentarily one life, ten lives, fifteen lives, he is not realizing it. Imagine eighteen million years, we did not realize this and we butchered each other. We butchered them, they butchered us. What kind of philosophy is that? Where are we going with such a life until now? We do not have guns only, we have bombs that devastate fifty football fields in one minute. Wow, what a power is given to us to exercise our self-intrust. That is why we are in darkness. Did you hear any nation that boasts they have no army? I know one little government that has no army, no weapons, but all nations boast about having new aircraft that immediately hits the target and devastates those in whom the Lord lives. Whom are you hitting? You are creating karma because you are hitting the Lord in them. A person is considered blind if he cannot see the oneself in all living beings. And if the blind try to run the show, you have exactly the same problems that we have now in the world. The qualities of a seeing eye can be enumerated as follows. He sees the self in all beings. He thinks, speaks, feels and acts as if he were one with that self. He is free from fear, anger and greed. He has co-measurement. All he does is for the unity of mankind. He is balanced between matter and spirit. Hate is eliminated from his system and no longer controls his attitude to life. He does not steal, deceive or exploit. He is open and clear. Verse seven. When a man knows that all beings in their essence are the sparks of the supreme self, he sees the unity in all and becomes free from illusion and anxiety. An illusion is a distorted truth, a distortion of fact that exists in the mind as a thought-form. Imagine that the mind is a computer and one of its memory banks is malfunctioning. All the answers you receive will be influenced by that defect. The same thing happens when people have illusions. The conclusions, viewpoints and attitudes are all distorted. The root of illusions is separativeness. Until consciousness of real unity is achieved, people will act under the power of illusion. One of the greatest illusions is death. People react with enormous anxiety towards death. Their whole attitude toward life is changed after losing a loved one, either towards self-destructive tendencies or deep depression. When the illusion of death is taken away, a great change can occur in our lives. Anxiety can be removed when the feeling of separativeness is removed and when jealousy and crimes are eliminated. As a consequence of such removals, we can have a longer, happier and more prosperous life. When a man knows that all beings in their essence are the sparks of the supreme self, he sees the unity of all and becomes free from illusion and anxiety. Every time he is taking the same thing and adding something else. All discussions, all debates from the forest dwellers ended in crystal clear verses, that is the upnishads. Some say you are healed. Who cares if you are healed or not? To be healed means to live another two, three years. Think about eternity. What are two or three years? It is strange. The world is in darkness. Glorious are the people who feel that the Lord lives in them, the spark of the Lord and they live in the Lord in all their transactions, in all their expressions and works and activities. Verse eight. The self is all pervading, radiant, transcendental, in one rabel and pure. The evil cannot approach Him. He is the fountain of all wisdom. He is the one who is in constant becoming. He is the one who sees. He is self-existence. He is the source of the law in every manifested being. The self is all pervading and radiant. He is taking from all and bringing some new ideas. He's taking from all and bringing some new ideas. He is transcendental, he is not limited by anything, anywhere, invulnerable and pure. Even if you do millions of mistakes, you cannot make dirty the self in you. How beautiful. You do not say to people, you die, you go to hell, you die, you go to heaven, or you can die and go to purgatory so that you repent there and clean your dirt and then graduate into heaven. There is no heaven and hell, there is one Lord. And the Lord is making you to be like him, striving toward perfection. You are in the Lord, do not be afraid. If you are afraid, you are not in the Lord. You are in your body, you are in your emotions, you are in your actions, you are in your thoughts. You are not in the Lord. When we know that all beings in their essence are the sparks of the supreme, we see the unity of all and become free from illusion and anxiety. The self is all pervading. Transcendental, invulnerable and pure, the evil cannot approach the lot. What is the evil? Evil is the moment you do not remember. You do not realize that the Lord is living in everybody and everybody is living in the Lord. That is the movement, the second that you are throwing out yourself and short-circuiting yourself, you become evil. Lord is the fountain of all wisdom, of all knowledge. All knowledge and wisdom that a man has is a discovered fraction of that ocean of wisdom and knowledge. Lord is the one who sees. I once saw a painting of a hand with an eye drawn in the palm. It symbolized the seeing eye which is awakening in all works done with our hands. I also saw a painting of a foot at the top of which there was an eye seeing all out it by the plane which we see. The eye of the self does not have any physical, emotional or mental obstructions. We begin to see like him if we rarely see him in all creatures and live accordingly. Verse nine. Those who devote their lives only to rituals, hoping that rituals will save them, enter into a gloomy darkness and those who only study the scriptures but do not apply them, enter into great darkness. Greater darkness. Rituals, I repeat again, those who devote their lives only to rituals, hoping that rituals will save them, enter into a gloomy darkness. All those who only study the scriptures but do not apply them, enter into greater darkness. Rituals run through all that the Hindus do. From early morning until the moment of sleep, they perform rituals so that they will live in harmony with divine energies and laws. But such rituals cannot save a person unless the rituals contact the supreme self or create a channel for the expression of the energy of the self. It is only in coming in contact with one's own self that the reality of the supreme self can be realized. Verse ten. Those great sages who revealed to us the nature of self told us that the mere observation of rituals and the mere study of the scriptures lead us into darkness. Rituals and studies cannot help us unless we strive and change our being and live the life of the one self. People form a great cloud layer around their true self and impress it upon themselves by dedicating their lives fanatically to rituals, traditions and studies without striving to change their lives. Such people will have extreme difficulty adjusting themselves to the ideas, plans and visions of the future and of the greater whole. The obstacles of humanity are those minds that cannot grow out of their shells but live in their rituals, doctrines, dogmas and superstitions. This is the darkness referred to in verses nine and ten. Verse eleven. Whoever knows both rituals and scriptures and strives to the knowledge of the self attains immortality. Rituals must have one aim, to contact the spiritual realities within man and the universe and receive energy and inspiration to strive further on the path of perfection. Scriptures reveal the subjective realities of life and teach us how to live according to the divine plan and purpose. But both of these are not enough if man does not advance in God realization, self-realization, or if he does not transform his nature and spiritualize it. Knowledge of self can only be attained in the process of mastery of the not self, through the mastery of physical urges and drives, emotional glamours, mental illusions and through gradiently using the higher vehicles. In the knowledge of the self, one continuously progresses toward becoming oneself. You know only that which you become. Verse twelve. Those who worship only matter and want to be in matter are in darkness. Those who worship the impersonal absolute one face their own ignorance. This is such a beautiful verse. Mo- most of us are merged and live in matter. Worshipping its many forms such as the body, possessions, sex and all other phenomenal forms. This produces strong attachment and attachment produces karma. So we imprison ourselves in matter age, age after age with pain and suffering. True knowledge descends on a man when he realizes the oneself and gradually starts to be that self. Verse thirteen. They say, when one worships the unmanifested one, he attains different results than the one who worships the manifested world. The unmanifested one lives within and without the manifested world. The worship of the unmanifested one leads us toward transcendental values, principles, virtues and power. It helps us expand our consciousness and strive toward perfection. The worship of the manifested world leads us toward greater attachment to matter and into greater slavery. The i- ideal path is to worship the unmanifested one as a transcendent and an eminent reality who is within each living being and who in the meantime stands behind all phenomena. Verse fourteen. Whoever knows both the unmanifested cause and the manifested creation, he alone attains immortality by destroying his ignorance about the self. Actually, this verse presents the solution to the previous verse. The disciple of wisdom lives, moves and has his being only in the one self and all knowledge is related by him to that self. Ignorance is destroyed when this unity is seen. And from this unity emerges the consciousness of immortality. Death is separation, immortality is unity. Verse fifteen. The door of the truth is covered by a golden disc. Open it, oh pilgrim, in order to see yourself in the pure truth or hiranyamayana patrana satyasa pibitam mukham tatvatvam usanuparvannu satyadharmadhrashtai. Again, I am, I apologize if my pronunciation in the Sanskrit verse is not correct. This is a beautiful mantra and one can meditate upon it occasionally with great benefit. It is in the truth that the self is found. Sat means truth, reality. The same teaching was given by Christ when he said, and you will know the truth and that truth will make you free. One can find himself only in truth. This is the startling statement. Verse sixteen. O thou who sustains the whole universe, the only one, the almighty power, the only sun, withdraw your rays so that I see your most blessed face and in thee I beheld my true self. Or usan ekashayama surya prajapatai vayu rasmin samujate jo yattorupam khalyanatam taksse patsyami yusav asu purushasoham asmi. This is the most beautiful mantra in the Upanishad. Real self is a ray projected from the central cell. When the ray is withdrawn, the spark is fused with the sun and the sun and it are one. This verse is charged with a great aspiration for unification. We have similar mantras recited at the time when the spark is leaving its body so that it heads towards the right direction. It is almost impossible to build a concept about the unmanifested self, but the great avatars such as Krishna, Buddha and Christ reflect the unmanifested one in their lives and teaching. The unmanifested one is known to the degree that one manifests him in his life, living according to his innermost self. Verse seventeen. Let this body be burned to ashes after my last breath has returned into the ocean of prana. Oh Lord, who is the recorder of all sacrifices, remember all that I have done for the one self for you, Om. Or vayur anilam amritam athidam bhasmantas sariram om krato amra kratam samra kratosamra kratamsamara. This and the following verse are the last words of the one who is leaving the body. Verse eighteen. Guide us, oh fire, my Lord, to the right path so that we all reach you. You know all our deeds. Please remove all hindrances and numerous vices on our path. We give you our word of obedience. If the departing person cannot recite these two verses, the attending person or a close family member or friend can recite them for the one who is passing away. These eighteen mantraic verses explain how to be born in the self, how to recognize the self in others, how to grow in becoming the self and how to go back to the one self. On the path of this sacred duty, you are free from fear, hatred, greed and anger. You are free from matter, illusion and darkness. As you travel the path, you become the path itself, the destination. On this path, we perform our duties, manifest our divinity and let our light shine through our creative fire. So these were the eighteen verses from Isha Upanishad as explained by Dotcom Saradhanil. I hope uh it is of some great help to you and helps in transforming your thought process. Bye bye. Thank you for being a part of the session.